Good evening, welcome to the North Andover School Committee meeting of October 22nd, 2020. It is now 7:01 PM and I would ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would ask you all to silence your devices and let you know that this meeting is being recorded. And I will start with the Governor's order and then I hope I will remember to introduce all the participants who are with us. So, this open meeting at the North Andover School Committee is being conducted in a hybrid model consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. The Governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will include public comment received via a form as posted on the agenda and also via email. For this meeting, posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join the meeting Comcast 99, Verizon 28, North Andover Cam and North Andover Cam YouTube. Please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference or by telephone. We've all been doing this for a while, so we know that I will identify people by name, all our votes will be by roll call, and we will give an opportunity for members to ask questions or comment at various times through the meeting, either at the end of agenda items or at the end of different presentations. So I won't read all of that. Okay, so I will identify the school committee members present and then I will ask Dr. Gilligan to identify others who are present on the meeting. So I'm Helen Picard, I'm Chair of the School Committee, and with us are Member David Terese, please respond with "Aye."
Aye.
Member Holly Fitzlidge.
Aye.
Member Amy Mabley.
Aye.
And Member Andrew McDevitt.
Aye.
And we have a student representative, Eamon O'Carroll.
Aye.
Thank you. And Dr. Gilligan, can you introduce the members of the team and any guests that you have with us?
Yes, certainly. We have Executive Director of Special Education, Massey Bakusi, is here. Dr. James Mealy, to my left, Dr. Mealy?
Is here.
He's here. We have Lorraine Marks, the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Lorraine, would you like to introduce your team?
Certainly, proud to. Kristin Ando, who is our Humanities Coordinator. We have Jackie Taylor, who is a literacy coach focused this year on grades three through five, and Anne Joyce, who is a literacy coach focused on grades two through two.
Is there anybody on the meeting that we did not call your name? Okay, terrific. So thank you all for being here. So our first order of business is public comment, and we do have a phone call of somebody who's going to be joining us. So let me, the way that we do that is the form online gives people the choice whether they want to send a written comment or if they want to make a phone call into us, and we'll give them three minutes to make their public comment. And I am calling right now Lee Blumel of 54 Brad Street Road. So hopefully this all goes smoothly.
Hello?
Hello, is this Lee Blumel?
It is.
Hi, Lee, this is Helen Picard, Chair of the North Andover School Committee, and I'm welcoming you to make your public comment.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm joining you tonight to share a resource with the schools and educational community as the town approaches its 375th anniversary in 2021. I am the Minister at North Parish Unitarian Universal Congregation, which was founded 375 years ago on October 24th, 1645, a birthday we'll be observing this weekend. Since the church was founded a few months before the town, we have a few months' lead on engaging with that 375-year history. We've created a history booklet called Hidden in Plain Sight, the unexamined history of a New England town and parish. And we're hoping you might be interested in approving it for use as a resource for social studies and history classes and school tours. There is an online version, a paper version, and a poster version at the Stevens Memorial Library. North Parish was once a Puritan congregation and the founding congregation of the town, so for centuries, the history of the town and of the church were the same or at least tightly linked. The brochure covers four chapters of our history, most of which have often not been told: the Pennacook, the witch trials, slavery, and racial segregation. Most people in our congregation were aware of our connection to the so-called Salem witch trials, but few were aware of the history of the indigenous and Black people who historically lived here. Several years ago, we didn't know much about the Pennacook, who lived in 30 villages along the Merrimack River, and experienced a pandemic known as the Great Dying, or the history of slavery as it was practiced in small New England towns like Andover, or the forms of institutional segregation that continued to separate and alienate Black and white Americans after slavery was ended in the Commonwealth around 1783. We find ourselves using facts from this booklet to raise our own awareness and understanding of a wider and more accurate view of history, and to imagine students doing the same. For example, for our church anniversary this Saturday, at 4:45 PM, the Paul Revere Bell in our steeple will be rung 375 times. But those ringing the bell will be observing certain historical milestones, such as the 138 years that slavery was legal and present in town, and the 42 additional years of what could be called apartheid before Black parishioners were granted even segregated seating on the main floor of our meeting house. In Sunday service, the President of the Kowasuk Band of the Pennacook Abanaki, with whom we've been building a relationship, will be offering us greetings and a land acknowledgement. So as the town prepares to mark its 375th anniversary in 2021, there's an incredible opportunity to focus on teaching local history as American history, especially the seldom-heard narratives about people who are underrepresented or ignored in the ways history is often taught and shared. The congregation is glad to be able to offer this resource to the schools and the educational community. I'd be happy to send copies to the committee members, and we hope that you will approve it and share it widely. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Lee. Okay, thank you for your time, and if you can hang up now, that would be helpful to us. And she's gone, she didn't even say goodbye. Thanks, Lee.
Three minutes.
Okay. So our next public comment is from a group of people, and I am reading these on my computer screen. So I won't be able to see you, but shout out if anything goes amiss. So this is from the Parent Five-Day Synchronous Learning Committee, which is composed of Ron Carpanito, 34 West Woodbridge Road, Leah Manzi, Caller, 85 Lancaster Road, Julie Cox, 115 Olympic Lane, Kevin Driscoll, 86 Kingston Street, Jen Goldman, 28 Jared Plaza, Corinne Rotten, 13 Perry Street, Jen Watson, 30 Huckleberry Lane, and Jeremy Young, 29 South Bradford Street. And it states, "We are a self-formed committee of parents dedicated to working together to increase the teaching and learning for our children. Now the time to make meaningful change to the current hybrid and Ola models to provide greater synchronous learning to benefit all students." Where, as we communicated last week to you, the North Andover Union Reps and school administrators, we developed a high-level proposal that we want to present to school committee, North Andover Public School Administration, and NADA, on how NAPS can provide five-day synchronous learning to all students for trimester two. This would, if implemented properly with appropriate support, reduce the burden on teachers. We feel this proposal affords many benefits outlined in the attached charts, available online at, and there's a website, a link. This proposal is similar to other Massa towns and neighboring states' five-day synchronous learning programs. As you know, we conducted a feedback survey of the North Andover Public Schools community, asking if they approved of this plan and requested comments. 451 members of the community responded to the survey, the overwhelming majority of the 430 parents of the North Andover students approved the plan. Our results show that over 69% of parents approved of the plan, and that increased 80% of parents with at least one high school student. Let me state that again, or let her state that again. 80% of the 159 high school parents responding to the survey approved of five-day livestream synchronous learning. Their voice needs to be heard, all parents' voices need to be heard. The feedback comments overwhelmingly cited the need for more learning time, more structure, and concern that students are falling behind. The comments reflected that there are challenges, and they recognize the need for teacher support to make this successful. There are two points that are abundantly clear: one, parents want to find a way to increase learning for their children; two, just as ABECC has a different model than other schools, it is imperative that solutions are tailored for each school level, elementary, middle school, and high school. The proposal is a starting point, and we would like to present our findings and thoughts in more detail. This proposal should be tailored and adapted by North Andover Public Schools administrators to provide increased synchronous learning. It's time to create a plan to provide children five-day of live learning. Okay, the next comment is from Toby Garrus at 76 Buckingham Road, and it says, "Would like to know how many positive cases per school or grade would determine the decision to switch from hybrid to remote?" Our next comment is from Courtney Aquilina at 681 Great Pond Road, and it states, "I wonder why we do not quarantine a class," parentheses, "cohorts," "if there is an exposure. Wouldn't that be the safest way to isolate the virus, especially since Lawrence General Hospital has free testing? We could clear the children plus family and have a safer environment through testing. I want my children in school. Just seems we need a plan with our uptick in cases." And Suzanne Nobley, 317 Hillside Road, says, "This is an opportunity to have the school step up and enhance the scope of teaching. We understand this takes added planning, but as parents, are you satisfied with a remote of only three days? Isn't this the time to start looking at providing five days of synchronous teaching? What will it take to do this? This may not be the first time we have to close down." And I have two email comments that are not on that same form, but this one is from Michael Litz of 30 Leanne Drive, and it says, "As cases in our schools begin to rise alongside the town and state as a whole, it would be helpful to have a tracking system dashboard in place. This would provide a more comprehensive way to understand the spread of COVID than individual emails for each event. Somewhat relatedly, it is unfortunately a failure by the federal and state levels that there is no government-run mandatory database of school-based COVID tracking. But Brown Economist Emily Oster has set up a voluntary one," there's a link here. "It is neither perfect nor comprehensive, but I think it would be beneficial for our school to contribute to the larger understanding of how COVID does or does not spread in school systems. Perhaps it can help generate improved best practices." Michael is 30 Leanne Drive. And this one came late. I do ask that people get them in an hour in advance. That allows me to sort through and make sure that I have the correct phone numbers to call people and such, and I don't want to miss anything. But I did see this one from Ellen Mary Carr at 29 Hawthorne Place, and it says, "Thank you all for your continued diligence and hard work navigating this very stressful time. This is, there is confusion among parents as to what the next two weeks will look like. Could Dr. Gilligan please clarify what the schedule will be for high school students for the next two weeks? Will they be having live remote every day as they did for the first two weeks?" So those are our public comments, and I would turn to membership and see if anybody has anything that they want to say at this point. Mr. Terese?
No.
Ms. Lynch?
No, but I just, I think the schedule was, sent out the schedule today about the next two weeks. So it is on the line.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Mabley?
Uh, no, thank you.
And Mr. McDevitt?
I think that Dr. Gilligan is probably going to answer some of the questions in the report, specifically around some of the action tonight, so I'll wait till the end.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. And it says recognition on our agenda. I don't know of any specific recognition that we have tonight. Dr. Gilligan, are you aware of any specific recognition?
I'm not aware of any, but one just came to mind, if you don't mind me saying it.
I'd be delighted.
Just a few short days back, it seems like a long time ago, we had a catastrophic technology failure downtown, and myself, Melissa Rodriguez, the town manager, working really closely together, helped get our new consultant, E Plus, on board. But really, probably there 16, 17 hours a day, Mike Grant from our IT department just did an amazing job, and David Broda, that works on the town side, he's in charge of the network, they really made something happen that shouldn't have been fixed so quickly. So I'm just really proud of both of them and appreciate working with the town.
Thank you for mentioning that. And I would, I would add to that, that I'm so impressed with our teachers, who were really working without any technology tools, and that includes not being able to use the printer. So I mean, if we were going to move to paper work, they really couldn't do that either. So they were working with nothing but wits, and the TAs as well. So I'm really thankful for, for all those who stepped up in that particular challenge. So we move into our consent agenda and our approval of minutes. And I would see if there is anyone who would move the approval of our minutes for...
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes for the October 1st, 2020 School Committee meeting, as presented in the packet.
Thank you. And do we hear a second?
I'll second that.
I think I heard two seconds, so Ms. Mabley moved, and Ms. Lynch, did you second?
Yes.
Okay. And so if there are any discussion, any edits, any changes? Hearing none, we'll start with Mr. Terese.
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, so that's 5-0 to approve the minutes of October 1st. Thank you very much. And we are on to our student report, and Eamon O'Carroll is with us.
Hi, yeah. So Mika wishes she could be here tonight, but you know, her senior year is a lot of stuff to do, so it's just going to be me for tonight. So seeing as there's a lot up in the air over the last few hours, I'm just going to focus on the questions that the committee posed to Mika and I last, at the last meeting. So I believe there were six of them, and they were covering all sorts of topics. So I, Mika, and several of our peers, I just asked people to get a feel for where they stood on these questions to provide a broader perspective of what students were feeling. So the first question was from Mr. McDevitt, I believe, and it was, "How do you feel learning in person is with a smaller class? Do you feel learning is proceeding faster or slower with the material?" So I would say generally, learning with a smaller class has been a good thing. You have classes that feel more close-knit, classes where you feel like you have a closer relationship with the teacher because you have more one-on-one time with that teacher than you would with a larger class. I also have noticed that some of my peers have come out of their shell a little bit, because you know, fewer people in the class, there's less pressure on you if you get the answer wrong, or if you feel like you're going to be ridiculed for something you say. But, and also there's the fact that you don't have people to hide behind if you don't want to speak. So there's a certain amount of pressure to speak, especially in, you know, I have a French class where we have three people, so there is nowhere to hide in that room. But as for how fast the learning progresses, I wouldn't say you're moving any faster or slower through the material, because Cohort A and Cohort B have to be in the same place. So what I'm learning on Tuesday has to match up with what somebody is going to be learning on Monday. So you're operating within the constraints of the model with, in terms of how quickly you can move through material. The next question was about lecture-based classes. And Mr. McDevitt, you had asked if we felt like we were missing out on dialogue with other students, because you know, you're in Cohort A and you're missing what somebody with the perspective that's different from yours is saying in Cohort B. And I would actually say, for myself and for many of my peers, they feel like the lecture-based classes are, have better discussion, because, as I mentioned earlier, you have people coming out of their shells. So you're getting more perspective from people who might not be as willing to speak. And even though you might be missing some perspective that it was said in Cohort A, you're still getting a broader range of people speaking and speaking more often. So the next question was about attendance policies. How do you feel they are? How do you think they've worked? And so I mentioned this a little bit last meeting, but I think that the asynchronous attendance form, which if you don't know, is just like Google form you fill out every day for the days you're not in school, where you're like, have you, did you do 50 minutes worth of work? Did you come to class prepared? That sort of thing, and you answer yes or no. I think it's, it works as decently well, perhaps not as well as it could, because you can't always get everybody to come, sit down, and do their work. There, there's no guarantee that if you push yes on the form, you're going to be doing 50 minutes worth of work. But it's a decent incentive to get your work done on the remote days. And when we do have days where you're, like Wednesdays where you're all together, there's usually a full house for class, because teachers are taking attendance, it's going into Power School, you're all on camera, so there's a reason for you to show up, and you're not going to have classes like we did last spring where you had people missing, because there was no incentive to show up. The next question was about homework and assignments and that sort of thing. So how do we feel about the levels of homework being assigned? And so I think one thing that was consistent among my peers in CP honors and AP classes is everyone feels like there's more work. And I think there's a few reasons for this. So the first is that because classes are only 50 minutes long, anything you don't finish is going to become homework, unlike a 72-minute block where if you finish within the period, you're done, and you don't have that opportunity with a 50-minute block, so it just rolls over into the evening. Another thing is that because teachers have fewer assignments for tests and assessments and that sort of thing, they're giving more graded work that's going to be done at home to make up for it, which contributes to that feeling that you have more work. And then a third reason, and again, just observations, nothing set in stone, but is, I think teachers have a feeling that they want to keep students occupied, make sure they have enough work to do, that they're not feeling like, oh, students are going to be sitting at home on their phones, doing nothing. And so there's more work being given to compensate for the fact that in the spring, you would have days where you could go without having any work to do. And so because of all that, I think in terms of quantity, there is perhaps a little more work, but in terms of the actual feeling, it feels like a lot more work for most students because of all those reasons, but also because it's not as easy to stay motivated on those remote days as it could be. And I think Mika and I painted a very rosy picture last week about getting work done and being incentivized and that sort of thing when you're at home. But I think we're all guilty of, you know, picking up the phone and being distracted. You've got a million things you could be doing other than your work. And so it is difficult to find that motivation often, you know, I'm completely guilty of it. And I think that that all contributes to feeling like there's more work. While it's not as much more work, there certainly is a decent bit more work this year compared to where it would be last year for everyone. The next question was related to group work, how it's going in school, out of school, that sort of thing. So group work across the board, pretty good, because teachers have the option, as you see in the Google Meet here, to make breakout rooms within the, on the remote days, so we can be doing some sort of math assignment, and the teacher can split us up into groups of four, and then you can collaborate, and it builds that class rapport, and you feel like you're making a connection. And then when you're in school, because the classes are so small, you know, if you have eight or 10 people, it's possible to be doing group work with just that eight or 10 people, because you don't have a need to break out into smaller groups, since there's already such a small amount of people. And that contributes to this more tight-knit feeling of the class. You feel like you're doing more work, more collaboratively with your peers, and I feel like my teachers have done a very good job, and my peers feel like their teachers have done a very good job of making projects collaborative while also adhering to the guidelines of distancing. So you're not necessarily next to each other, writing something or working on a problem, but you're, you know, talking across the room, hey, did you get, you know, x equals four on that problem, that sort of thing, just making it more personal and more fun than it would be if you were just sitting in the desks the whole time doing notes. And the last question came from the Chair, and it was about the non-classroom experiences you might have. So things like guidance, or things like going to the nurse. And from my experience, and this is just from, with guidance, I haven't, you know, gone to the nurse or done any other non-classroom things, but they've implemented protocols to address COVID concerns while also making it helpful for the student. So for guidance, you can walk up to the wall outside Guidance, pull out your phone, scan a QR code, and it will take you to a forum to sign up for a meeting with your counselor virtually. And this is great, because you know, you've got access to your counselor when you need them, at a time that works for you, on the non-in-person days. And if needed, you can go see them at the end of the day, you know, and talk to them about any sort of issues you may be having, scheduling, that sort of thing. But these non-classroom experiences have been modified to work well during COVID, so that we don't have to go without them. And I think that's fantastic. So a great job all around. So those were the six questions. Do you have any questions?
So we'll go around the membership, and we'll start as usual with Mr. Terese.
No questions, thank you.
Good. And Ms. Mabley?
Just one, Eamon, I know that you and Mika are seniors, and I know you're trying to think about college applications. And I have seen on the high school website, the virtual campus visits, if you will, the virtual representatives from various colleges and universities coming by. Have you taken advantage of any of those? And I don't know that you have anything to compare it to from last year, but, but how's that worked out so far?
Yes, I have taken advantage of a couple of them. It's, it's pretty good, you know, it's like 20 minutes, you're with the representative from the local area. Some of them are just, you know, slideshows showing you the college. Some of them are more speaking-based, asking questions, that sort of thing. But it's as good as you could expect it to be during these times, but it still gets the job done. So I think it works pretty well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. McDevitt?
No, I just want to say thank you, Eamon. Great job, and I actually forgot some of the questions that I think I asked.
Oh, you just muted yourself by mistake there.
Oh, my, okay?
Yep.
All right, sorry. I just want to thank you, Eamon. You know, I think I forgot a couple of the questions that I asked, but you captured them all, you answered them, and I really appreciate it. Great job.
Yeah, it is really tremendous, Eamon, to have that body of knowledge from, from you, from your experience. I really appreciated it a great deal, and I too had forgotten that I had asked that question. So kudos to you for like paying such close attention and bringing it back to us. So we'll look forward to another report when we meet again in November, and you are free to go or welcome to stay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And so we're on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Gilligan?
Well, thank you so much. I think I started out today earlier with some recognition, just acknowledging, you know, the technology issues that the whole town had. We were down with internet all day, Monday and Tuesday, and phones were spotty. We were able to put up our emergency numbers for phones so that people could call in in case they have an emergency and get that out there. But again, someone asked me, a parent walking down the street the other day by Dunkin' Donuts, said, "Well, how did you guys manage?" And I said, "Well, it was a lot like when I first started teaching. We took attendance by hand, we took the lunch information by hand." And I know this much, I'm just really proud of the teachers for their work, something they weren't expecting, and I'm glad we were able to get it fixed. So that's the first part. The second part is, you had asked about Mr. Jackson's letter. It appeared maybe it didn't get to everybody, so I had Bev Zagari blasted out again from the central office, as well as put it in the news at North Andover High School. So tomorrow, North Andover High will wrap up with Cohort B for their day, and then starting Monday, both Cohort A and B will be together for this period while they're remote, just like we started in the beginning of the school year. for this period while they're remote, just like we started in the beginning of the school year until we come back on November 9th. And that would include the online academy high school kids as well.
So you mean five days a week?
Yep. Yes. Yep. So just check out the front page if you, if you need that. The third piece is um we've really worked hard to um create the protocols, the procedures, the training to make our schools safe. And I have to say, while we're in school, it's just been amazing. Uh, the kids wear masks, uh, they wash their hands, they use the hand sanitizer, they socially distance. All the schools have been set up to track kids where they go everywhere. I mean, it's just been remarkable. I know some folks had some concerns about kids not wearing masks. No cases of it. It's been absolutely remarkable and the ability for us to keep the kids at six feet has made a huge difference. So I'm, I'm just really proud there. The second part is we're really committed to transparency. Um, you know, when we have had a COVID case in a school, we have sent out a principal letter to the entire school and the superintendent has also sent out a letter with the principal's letter attached to the entire community because we want to be really upfront. You know, we've had a couple of cases uh at elementary and uh those are not any type of school-based cases, actually family-based cases. So uh, we have sent those out. We've put them on the website and um Hillary, our website person, she had some good ideas about me not clogging everyone's inbox with a blast everywhere and finding a spot on the front page we could put it so people could check it all the times. So I, I think that's a, a really good idea. The other important thing to know is that if you are a close contact and you have to quarantine, the Board of Health folks uh and our folks, they'll track you down and let you know. So those letters are really accurate. You know, on the, in the news section on our front page and we've blasted them out all week for if there are any cases. There's really detailed information, not only from the principal, but we have a NAPS COVID-19 information and planning page with all their links. We have the NAPS positive COVID-19 case process. We have a when to stay home page. We list the information about if you have any questions about whether you should stay home. Um, the, the hours and the phone number of the nurse you can get to ask questions. Uh, and we also have the town's COVID-19 information page along with um town Board of Health, Public Health, uh, any questions that they have uh through email and a phone as well. So I think that's been really important. And then last but not least, um, you know, today, uh, it was hard, you know, it was a hard decision to make about um North End of a High School. We had five positive cases today. And our public health nurse and director of public health and our director of health here in the Northern Public Schools and our nurses, they've been working really hard on tracking anything. So this was um, these five positives were not a case of in-school transmission. However, we have um some pending still and it was determined that it is best at this time for North End to take this time off so that we can uh come back and all the appropriate kids who may not have known or been a close contact, not in school, but outside of school through different activities. You know, will not uh spread the virus. I think it's really important to remember, I think, you know, we all want to go back to the way it was. And my goal is this, I want our kids in school. I think a lot of folks might not realize that there are many communities that haven't gone to school in person yet in this region. And um we are committed to getting that face time. So we can't get complacent. We have to continue to be vigilant. I know it's, you know, some people might not find it easy and inconvenient, but you have to, outside of school, you have to do the social distancing. You have to continue to wear a mask. You have to continue uh, you know, with hand hygiene, sanitizer, washing. These are all critical because, you know, we do a tremendous job. I just can't get over what the administrators and the teachers and the kids have done in school. But what's really critical is outside of school, the kids belong to all sorts of different clubs, sports. And some of them are excellent and, and some may not be following all the protocols. As well as, you know, uh, gatherings. It's just critical that we stay vigilant. We cannot get complacent because we need to keep our schools open and we want to. So um it was a team effort today with uh the director of public health, Brian LaGrasse, the town manager, Melissa Murphy Rodriguez, um as well as Cheryl Bazak, the town nurse, Caroline Ibertson, and our COVID response team members here from Central Office. So uh, that's been Dr. Mealy, uh, Ms. Marks and some other folks. So really a lot of thought and effort and has gone into all of this work and, and it's not easy. Uh, I really applaud our public health nurses, uh, and our school nurses who have been working day and night um to work with families to get them ahead. So um, that information again on the high school is published on the front page and um I think that's it for the report.
We actually have a couple of other things, Dr. Gilligan, that are on the agenda, but I want to go through the um, I want to go through the membership first, but we will want to be hearing the enrollment update and the dyslexia and literacy programming. Um, so um, any questions or comments, Mr. Teresi?
Nope.
Ms. Mabley?
No, thank you very much for the thorough report and for reminding about the protocols and the processes. Some of the questions in public comment are around how you make those decisions. And I know that's all on the site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch?
No, thank you.
And Mr. McDevitt?
Uh, I do have one for Dr. Gilligan. Um, some of our surrounding communities are red and have been red from the beginning and have had athletic competition uh be able to continue. So I'm wondering if you can speak to what the difference is between North End over going red um and remote and um I would say probably a I'm assuming we could pause on the follow-up program?
Yeah. So Mr. McDevitt, that's actually a really good question. One of the things we did today besides convening because um, you know, this decision has to be made by the superintendent, but and the public health director and the town manager was great to participate. So um what's really important to know is that we also connected with DESE. I had a chance to speak with Jeff Riley, the commissioner. Uh, he's terrific to answer. So and I talked to um one of their liaisons who works with schools and, and why they may go remote for a period of time or longer. So in terms of athletics, based on the specific information regarding um these positives um and students in quarantine and pending results, you know, in this, this cluster of kids, uh, although not school-based transmission, it was determined that school sports and all activities be suspended through the ninth. Based on the specific health information. So um, at the same time, you have a very good question. There are some school districts, and every case is different, that may have different situations. So if North End ever had a situation and the specific health information was different, and a district was in the red and they went remote for two weeks, if it was determined that it would be safe to do so, the school committee could, under different circumstances, take a vote to approve, uh, to participate. At the end of the day, um, we, we want to make sure all of our kids are safe and healthy and we want to keep them in school.
So just as a quick follow-up, um, it, it's recommended that we be remote for sports for two weeks. From everything that I've seen with kids practicing games, competition, you know, they are wearing masks, they're on, they're outside for the most part. Um, I think there's at least one indoor sport. Uh, I could be wrong on that. But um is that something that we could vote for uh to not do? Or is that, uh, are we superseded by the Board of Health?
So based on this specific information, we made the determination, um, because it was specific, that sports and activities should be suspended. If we were in a different situation and if you were so inclined, the school committee and the language is um, you know, based on this information and talking to the liaison at DESE, it was really clear um what North End had to do um and along with the public health. But if we were in a different situation or if the school committee was so inclined that they thought we were in a position to approve sports because it was a different situation, or even if it was the same situation in red, um, there could be a vote for approval to do so.
So if I'm reading between the lines correctly, there's information that we're not allowed to be privy to that's help, that's informing the decision that's being made?
Based on the specific information that we had today, um, it was really clear from the public health, uh, from myself and from Melissa Murphy Rodriguez and the team um about taking this action, making a determination.
You're all set, Mr. McDevitt?
I am for now. I'm going to keep thinking until we get to new business.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
Um, I just have a technology question, just a confirmation. Um, we are now on the five gig FiOS and not on the one gig copper. Is that correct?
So we are on the five gigabyte uh from Comcast and um
Oh, sorry, Comcast.
That's okay.
Fiber, fiber is what I was looking to say, not iOS.
I, I forgot the probably 10, 12, 11 hours that I had. 10, 11, 12 hours that I had spent in town hall and around with Melissa and Mike and the gang uh in E plus. But yeah, uh, we made that switch over. When we had tested it, uh, the tracing test a couple, a week and a half ago, signs had come back really positive. So um, you know, this, this failure that currently happened may have played a role. Uh, they had one other issue that they had identified, but E plus was outstanding and our folks um that our folks um just did an awesome job getting it done. So we're on it. Um, you know, other than uh, town hall had slightly um a few minutes of spotty phones today. Um, we haven't had any issues. We've had the engineers monitoring. We have had voice engineers in and um we seem to be in, in good shape. So.
Well, thank you for the work that you did on that, especially creating emergency numbers for all the schools during the time that the phones were out. I know that was um some gymnastics you had to do there. So if you want to continue with your enrollment report, that would be helpful to us.
Well, could I ask one favor?
Yes.
A, I wasn't done with my report before.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, that was just me. Uh, so I didn't forget about Lorraine and the team and Jim, but Jim's going to be here anyway. So um, could we do Lorraine and her team uh go first and then we'll go to Jim?
Of course, of course.
If they're so inclined, they can leave early.
Not Lorraine, welcome to stay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Um, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about the dyslexia regulation and our literacy program. I'd like to introduce our presenters and their qualifications specifically related to this topic. So most of you know I'm Lorraine. I'm assistant superintendent for TCU Learning. I have a master's degree in learning disabilities and I am special certified. Kristin Ando is our humanities coordinator. She also has a master's degree in special ed and she is certified as both a special ed teacher and an ESL teacher. Jaclyn Taylor is one of our literacy coaches. She has an MAT in reading and is certified as both a special ed teacher and a reading specialist. She has an EBS in reading and is certified as a reading specialist. And Marcy Bukusi is our executive director of special education. And she is also certified in special ed and has a master's in special education. So we're here to talk about dyslexia and how it relates to our literacy program, particularly in the early grades. So dyslexia is defined as a specific learning disability that is neurobiological in origin. It is characterized by difficulties with accurate and or fluent word recognition and by corresponding quoting abilities. These difficulties typically result from a deficit in the phonological component of language that is often unexpected in relation to other cognitive abilities and the provision of effective classroom instruction. Secondary consequences may include problems in reading comprehension and reduced reading experience that can impede growth of vocabulary and background knowledge. So the key focus in that definition is the phonological component of language. And that's the area of dispute um with many reading people out there. So that's what we'll be addressing as well. Um, and just for those who may not know it, a phoneme is the smallest unit of sound. We talk about phonics as the way of teaching phonemes and sounds and putting those sounds together. And the phonological processing is use of sounds in one's own language to process both the spoken and the written word. Just a little background on some of the terms. So in October of 2018, the legislature approved a new law that required DESI and um the Department of Early Education to issue guidelines to assist districts in developing screening procedures or protocols for students that we deemed were at risk, um, potential indicators of neurological learning disabilities, including but not limited to dyslexia. And according to our legal counsel fairly recently, DESI has never actually completed and issued these guidelines for the dyslexia screenings that would be required under this general law. And um, I did not get there today, but um about a week or so ago, when I checked the DESI site, what it said was that these were in development for implementation in school year 2019 to 20. So given everything that's going on, it's understandable. So DESI did however, publish fairly recently a list of approved early literacy screening assessments. And these are universal screening assessments. They're typically brief, conducted with all students at a grade level and followed by additional testing when needed and targeted code-based core and supplemental instruction and also some progress, progress monitoring. So we are currently using um Lexia. We are not using the Lexia rapid. We are using the placement test and we are using that in our elementary schools. We also have been using the MAP, newer MAP growth assessment. We have used it in grades three through five for a few years. We have it available to us in our primary grades as well this year. And we have used for a number of years. I know many of you who've been on the school committee for a while have heard the DIBELS report. So um the University of Oregon's DIBELS, what we do. So we do use some of those assessments in district. And I'm going to let Kristin um talk a little bit about all of the screeners that we use because there are some others and specifically what skills they assess in terms of early literacy.
Excellent. Thanks, Lorraine. So in kindergarten, we give the brigands, the DIBELS. And we hope to in time give phonemic awareness um assessment as we go and those measure, but you can see on the side there, the brigands is more of a general academic cognitive screener and um DIBELS, the letter naming fluency subtest is um automaticity in naming of letters. And we just recently completed, I think, 285 kindergarten students, both in-person and remote in the letter naming fluency. In grade one and grade two, we're using Lexia, the autoplacement um assessment as our uh wide net to sort of capture data on everyone as well as the DIBELS subtests, which are all listed there. And those measure naming letters, segmenting sounds, letter sound correspondence and blending, sight word recognition and orally reading connected text. So those are, we're also um using in first grade, all of our first graders, the Hegarty phonemic awareness baseline assessment for grade one. So we'll have data on all of our first graders. Soon, uh, we're using these assessments in grade two, same Lexia wide net and the DIBELS subtests, which um measure automaticity in those following skills.
Okay. Um, because we're a team, uh, Kristin and Jackie and I, who believe in constantly learning and staying current, we participated in a book study over the summer with a big fat book called Essentials of Assessing, Preventing and Overcoming Reading Difficulties by David Kilpatrick. And some of the takeaways that we want to share with you are um that any successful prevention and intervention needs a phonological phonemic component, explicit instruction in letter sound skills and practice in connected text. And that the window of opportunity to print the greatest number of reading difficulties is before the end of first grade. Also that our brains learn to read words through a process called orthographic mapping. So we now have a dyslexia team in the district, so it includes all of us and Marcy as well as two special ed teachers, Melissa Drewan and Michelle Downey, and two reading specialists, Julie Nally and Jen Viterisi. And we will all be discussing what is in this book together and working on providing, already started, I have a stack on my table in my office, providing some additional phonemic awareness activities to all of our teachers. With our backgrounds in learning disabilities, in learning disabilities, special ed and reading, we never disagreed with the need for phonics instruction and the importance of early literacy support. In fact, Anna Jackie, over the past few years, provided a talk to parents, particularly for entering kindergartners, on raising a reader. That talk is also available on our parent university. A few years ago, we, as a group, did another book study, and out of that, we started to produce the kindergarten welcome log, where we had a book for students when they came in for their kindergarten screening. There were tips and tools for parents to use to help encourage and support literacy in their young children. Next slide. So, the district literacy plan. So, as a team, as a curriculum team, we often talk now about our big Y. So, our strategic plan talks about consistent and rigorous curriculum and equity for all. We have a very diverse population in North Andover. We have all kinds of learners, and we have our kids from a variety of backgrounds, and we want our students reflected in all of our curriculum, and for us in particular, in our literacy work. So, one of the things that Teachers College Reading and Writing Project states is that literacy for children is an act of social justice and a fundamental method of social progress and reform. And Guldi Mohammed, who is another diversity leader, states that literacy is connected to acts of self-empowerment, self-determination, and self-liberation. These are lofty goals, but this is something that we keep in mind as we work with our teachers and look at the curriculum and the materials that we are using as a team. So, when I first came to the district, the district was using a program called Reading Street. A lot of teachers spoke to me about the fact that there was very weak decoding in that program. There were some teachers that although they had been told to get rid of the decoding program that they used, had kind of hidden that away in their classrooms and were using it, little, I guess illegally at that time. There were also concerns about how that program developed reading behaviors and the strategies that it taught for reading comprehension. Back then, too, you may remember, there wasn't a whole lot of curriculum money. It was, it's my understanding that that program was bought with ARA money at that point. Over time, the humanities and STEM coordinator positions came into place. We began to change and update our curriculum. So, we started to change the literacy curriculum with the writing units of study. We rolled that out over time, provided a lot of PD, a lot of coaching, provided the materials. And where students typically only looked at writing as a narrative piece of writing, we now had the narrative informational and opinion writing. We also, once we had the two coordinator positions, developed a five-year curriculum plan. And in that plan, we looked at reading, and we looked at starting in the early grades, making some changes with reading. And we determined that we were going to use a foundations program, which is a research-based systematic explicit phonics program. It teaches students to recognize the sound and link them to the sounds in written words. Typically, if you remember learning to read, you talked about it, is sounding out the word. So, we thought that that would take some time. The three of us, Anna, Jackie and I, were sitting in a meeting doing some work on professional development around writing. We got a phone call from Dr. Gilligan, and at that point, our superintendent, Jen Price, and they, we thought they were kidding, but we had a very generous donation from a parent in the community who provided foundations materials over the course of a couple of years for all of our students, grades K through two. So, that was a huge boost for us. So, we kind of shifted gears, got together, provided a lot of professional development for the foundations program, and really brought back that phonics piece into our instruction. We also included in our five-year plan, looking at the reading units of study, and really developing a reading life for our students. So, the reading units of study had books in hand, complete books. One of my issues when I first came to North Andover, and again, I was a secondary person for a very long time, but the kids were reading portions of books. So, you'd have a fabulous novel, and the kids were reading a portion of it. And I couldn't understand how that developed excitement and love for reading. We also looked at the reading units of study because they included more diverse stories and characters. The classroom libraries provided a lot of books. Teachers were more engaged in the reading process. Teachers modeled the reading process. When, when I went into classrooms when they were using Reading Street, there was a CD player. You pushed the button and someone else read the story or the part of the story to the students. And we wanted really to see students see the teachers' excitement and engagement with that reading piece. The reading units also talk about very explicit instruction and teaching points. You include conferences and small group work, which gives students very targeted feedback. And again, I know that as we did these presentations over the years, you talk about you get better at reading by reading, you get better at writing by writing, you get better at playing tennis by playing tennis, not by listening to someone tell you how to read, how to write, or how to play tennis. So, this, this provided that opportunity in our new literacy blocks for kids to actually have books in hand and practice that reading. And I know we've shared videos over the years about the excitement and enjoyment that the kids have seen with that. Again, we did have those concerns about the lack of phonics instruction. We all agreed based on our training and backgrounds, and that's why we brought foundations in initially before the reading units of study, and have been working to modify lessons in the units of study that use what's called the cuing system. Also, just to kind of point out, just in terms of literacy programming in the district, we, a number of years ago, had a cut in our reading interventionists, and at one point, we had only our two Title I reading teachers. We now have a part-time reading specialist at every elementary school. So, if you were to go up and talk to a lot of districts, a part-time reading interventionist at elementary level is not a lot. In our five-year budget plan that we presented last year, we are looking to increase that support, and hopefully, we don't know how these times are going to affect how we move forward, but hopefully, that's something that can remain in that, in that plan. We also, when I came here, I came and worked at Thompson School. When I first came, the library was locked and dark. There was no sharing of books at that time. Parents then volunteered to provide some support. Eventually, over time, we had one librarian for five elementary schools. Now, we, we're fortunate, we have fabulous librarians. They are still part-time at every school, but making progress, so we're looking at that as well. And then, as Kristin mentioned, in terms of some of the assessments, we have started to work with the Hegarty phonemic awareness program, because as we looked at the foundations program, we felt that there needed to be more targeted instruction, activities, and experience with phonemic awareness at those early grades. So, I am now going to have literacy coaches talk about the essential components of reading and how this intersects with our curriculum.
Hi, Jim, would you mind just going back two slides for me? Yeah, that one, thank you. As Ms. Marks had said, this graphic represents the essential components of reading, and there are five main ones. And so, when we think about our curricula here in the district, we're looking to make sure that each one in some way addresses the components that we needed to address for our students. And so, as Ms. Marks had said, foundations was brought in because while it addresses all five of these components, its primary strength truly is in the phonics. Marilyn Adams is a brain reading researcher, and she has been known to say that the two best predictors of early reading success is a student's ability to have success in their alphabetic knowledge, which is that letter-sound correspondence and phonics, as well as their phonemic awareness knowledge. And foundations really hits home, the phonics component. It does have the phonemic awareness in there, but based on our recent reading, we're realizing that it doesn't go far enough for our earliest readers as we would like them to. Jim, do you mind hitting the next slide? Thank you. And so, we're bringing in the Hegarty program. And as of now, as of spring, I believe it was March, actually, that it happened, at the AB-ECC, they had the Hegarty program, and the wonderful reading teacher there had created some video lessons around that for those students as they went remote. And so, now all teachers have access to that program in kindergarten, and the district plan is to bring that to our pre-K students, as well as our first grade teachers. And with that, bring in PD, so that teachers feel confident and good in being able to use it. And that will address more directly and more explicitly the phonemic awareness, as well as the phonological awareness training that kids will need. Next slide.
Anne, your microphone's off.
I'm gonna get this one of these days. I really am. Thank you. So, as I was saying to myself, the reading study really focused in on the comprehension, fluency, and vocabulary, but their main goal is really to help kids develop a love of reading and develop really good reading habits. During each mini lesson, the teacher explicitly teaches a comprehension skill, a fluency skill, or vocabulary skill. And not only do they receive that explicit instruction with the teacher's guidance, they're also able to practice that skill right there in the moment. After the mini lessons, students then go off to read on their own independently in books that they can read with 96% accuracy. So, if they're reading a book with about 100 words, that means that they should make four or fewer errors as they're reading. As Ms. Mark said earlier, students get better at reading by reading. And so, the independent reading time during the workshop really offers this opportunity for students. While students are reading independently, this gives the teacher the opportunity to work either individually with students or in small groups. And this gives students the opportunity to further practice those skills and receive targeted feedback. And research has shown that when students receive targeted feedback around a skill that they're working on, that has a high effect size. So, that gives students the practice they need as well. Another component of the units of study is the read aloud, and the read aloud exposes students to rich oral language and vocabulary. And not only does it expose them to the oral language and vocabulary, it allows them to hear stories that they may not be able to access on their own. And they can see the teacher model, how they would read that story and pull important features out of that, like theme or character traits. And finally, while the students, while the units of study offer so many great opportunities for students to work together, think together, grow ideas together, they are a bit controversial around their decoding. And that is something that our team has looked very closely at, and we have worked to read through the units, and we are working diligently to pull out any lessons that talk about using those cuing systems that are not found to be effective strategies for readers.
Right. And I'm just going to, I don't want to embarrass my coaches here too much. They are both fabulous. As I mentioned earlier, this year, every year, we change things up a little bit. And this year, Jackie is focusing on grades three through five, and Anne is focusing on the early grades. I do receive wonderful compliments and praise for both of them. But since we're talking specifically about the K through two group, this is a comment that I received recently regarding Anne working with some first grade teachers, including a special ed teacher. And the, the quote goes something like, "They had such a strong first grade collaboration with Anne regarding the importance of phonemic awareness," goes on to say that Anne was doing so much to help the team strengthen and develop phonemic awareness in our youngest students. So, it's always heartwarming for me, and I'm so proud of the work that the coaches do. And as I said, both coaches receive tremendous accolades. We are so, so blessed. But I'm hearing that one because it has specifically to do with what we are talking about here today. So... So, Kristin is going to talk a little bit about our reading interventionists and our Title I teachers. Jim, you'll have to go back one?
Perfect, thank you. Here, you'll see our, the list of our reading interventionists and Title I teachers. As Lorraine said, each elementary and our early childhood center have at least one part-time or halftime reading interventionist. Some have more than one. And if you look for the instructional focus, as Jackie and Anne were saying, this emphasis on phonemic awareness, so we're bringing in the Hegarty program, and we'll work with all of our reading interventionists on that. The foundations program, this letter-sound correspondence and phonics component, and LLI, which is focused on connected text. And so, and you'll see down there at the AB-ECC, Jen was working with foundations and Hegarty. And so, when we asked our reading interventionists about all the professional development they had had or attended, it was pages and pages and pages. So, they're a very talented group invested in our youngest readers.
So, when all of our reading interventionists are certified with the Title I, who is being supervised by Kristin, and they did receive training in, for example, foundations, LLI programs we have indicated here that they use. So, there was a question about our Title I grant. So, Title I money varies year to year, sometimes significantly. Our Thompson and Atkinson schools are our Title I schools. So, if you look over the last few years, the biggest portion of the money goes to Title I teachers' salaries and teaching assistance in those schools, Atkinson and Thompson. So, we range from two to 2.75 reading specialists and from four to six teaching assistants over the course of the years. Sorry, my voice is... We also, with whatever money was available left after that, which is not a whole lot of money, we also provided to Tudor, Woodbridge, kindergarten welcome logs, some of the Lexia programming, and some library books. Move on. I also wanted to mention here the Student Opportunity Act grant. Last year, in the school committee meeting, I presented our Student Opportunity Act grant. It had to be approved by the school committee before I could submit it. One portion of that grant was around early literacy, increasing PD and the purchase of curriculum materials, and looking at our pre-K curriculum as well. Sorry, my voice is going. About two weeks ago, Governor Baker stated that the administration was proposing, postponing by one full year, the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act grant. So, we don't know where that stands. We had been in conversations with MGH and their reading trainers there. That's a group that we were looking to bring in. So, just that information. I'm turning it over to Mark to talk about our programming for dyslexia, if coded in the special education.
Thanks, Lorraine and everyone. So, Lorraine and her team talked a lot about prevention and intervention. So, we, we think about those two areas. We typically call those tier one and tier two supports. And what I'm going to talk about a little bit are the tier three supports. So, that's specially designed instruction with special, special education. So, just like everything else, dyslexia programming happens on... Our, our legal obligation is to provide services in the least restrictive setting. And what that means is providing services for students with, as much as possible, with age-appropriate peers in their homeschool settings. So, how we do that varies depending on students' needs. So, at the heart, when we're talking about students with dyslexia, they're being serviced in two ways, through specially designed instruction and through accommodations. So, when we think about what a student is really experiencing, based on what their cognitive profile looks like, it's pretty, it's a pretty complex situation, because what you have is a student that typically tests, and I'll try to make this as just sort of brief as possible, with a very intact average, at least, high average and often above cognitive ability. So, but with some really significant deficits in some areas of achievement testing. And that's typically with the encoding and decoding. So, what happens at the younger levels is you're really doing two things. You are implementing pretty significant accommodations at the classroom level, and that's through general education and special education, while teaching them specially designed instruction and teaching them phonics, decoding, and encoding. So, you're learning how to read to access the curriculum inside the classroom, but at the same time, should have access to general education curriculum. So, we have students with pretty significant profiles that should be accessing even honors and AP classes. And that's what our teachers are charged with providing for them. Our special education teachers, we are similar to the reading teachers, have a vast amount of training in reading instruction. Pages, again, pages and pages at every level, at every school. What is, are the typical programs that we think about when we think of dyslexia training, dyslexia instruction for students is Wilson and Orton-Gillingham. And again, that happens at all levels. So, we have programming that happens in the individual schools, as well as at, starting at grade three, language-based programming in a more self-contained model.
I think you're set, Marcy?
Yeah.
All right. That is our presentation. Thank you.
Tremendous. Thank you so much. And I will go through our membership and see if we have questions or clarifications or comments. And I will start with Mr. Teresi.
No questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you. And Ms. Mabley?
No questions. It was very informative. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch?
Yeah, I have a few, hopefully, easy questions. So Higerty's currently being used, the A B E C C, and you said the district plans to use it in the elementary schools. Is that this year? That was unclear. I couldn't tell.
Yeah. We're actually looking to, some of our first grade teachers have the program right now. We're looking to provide that for all of our first grade teachers and our reading interventionists. We're, I meet with my curriculum team on Fridays, and we're going to discuss whether they're special ed and EDL teachers.
So when you say you're looking to, it's just a matter of trying to find the time to implement it, or?
No. We are purchasing the material. We're talking about phonemic awareness and activities with those teachers. We are purchasing the program for first grade.
Okay.
Yeah. And we've also, just in addition, we are following up with that tomorrow, too. We're looking at, they only provide virtual trainings right now, but we have information on training for that that we could provide for our K through two teachers, possibly even pre-K.
Okay. And then back on the screening slide, is Higerty not available for kindergarten? Is that why it doesn't start till first grade?
No, we're looking, I believe, we're looking at doing it mid-year with kindergarten students.
Sorry, it's really hard to hear. Looking to do what?
We're looking to do that mid-year with kindergarten students.
I can't, still can't hear.
You can't hear me?
No.
Now it's better.
Yeah.
Okay, that's odd. We're looking to do it mid-year for kindergarten students. I think that was what was on the slide.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm assuming screeners are different from assessments, correct?
A screener is a form of assessment, so I'm not sure specifically what your question is.
So what reading assessments does the district use? Is it the same as the screeners? That's my question.
Yep. Those are, those are reading assessments. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think just that, like, semantically, the difference between screeners and assessments are just the manner in which they're given. Like, the screeners are meant to be shorter, quick, cover a large majority of kids, implemented by general education teachers. And then, like, when I think of assessments, I think of, you know, the GORT, the, you know, ALI.
So that was my understanding, too. That was, that was...
Yep. So two different, two different.
So are all the kids also getting assessed, or just the special education students?
No, we also have other assessments that we use from Foundations. We do running records. There are other assessments that they use, other than the screening assessments. Our general ed students do not receive the kind of assessments that Marcy is referring to, like the GORT. That would be a special ed assessment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Holly. And Mr. McDevitt?
So just very quickly, I mean, I think, Mrs. Marks, you really walked through kind of where we've been on the journey and go through. If the, the rest of your team were not as strong as I think they are, I can't imagine how you would be making the progress you are in this remote environment today. So I know it's just not the people who are here in the meeting, but I really want to say thank you for everything that you're doing for the kids and the students. And knowing from some family, you know, the earlier that you can detect any abilities in terms of dyslexia and learning disabilities, you know, the sooner that you can modify how those students learn, the better they are set up to succeed. So this is great. I look forward to some updates as we kind of continue in those tests, and hopefully we get some really good services out to kids, and we're able to perhaps catch them earlier than we might have been able to do. But thanks so much for everything that you all do for the kids. And I know it's difficult and challenging in this remote, quasi-hybrid remote world. So thank you for going the extra mile.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. I am one who has lived through much of this history. When my children started, we were in the Basil Readers, and then we moved into the Leslie University with the trade books and the workshop model, and then back to Reading Street. And now we're here with the college reading. And I don't think we can overstate the importance of windows and mirrors in literature, that kids can look out and see something different in the world, and that they can also look back at themselves and see themselves in their literature. So I think that's really critically important, and I appreciate it. I did raise a reader who entered kindergarten with no letter recognition and no letter recitation. So he did end up in an AP class in his senior year, as he is now in his third year in college. So I am fully aware that the volunteers that we had doing the Foundations Program at Thompson School before we implemented it really made a tremendous difference. So everything that you've said, I've lived through. So I'm saying that out loud because those of you who have struggling readers at home, who are young, all these things that they're doing will make a difference for your child. And you may have a reluctant reader when you start, and you may have a tremendously strong reader at the other end. And I just want to say that. And I just want, for clarification, for years I was confused about what the coaches did. And so I'm going to say what I believe the coaches do now. I believe that the coaches work directly with the teachers to coach the teachers so that the teachers can teach the children. And that from time to time, if there's a particular challenge with a reader, that the coaches may come in and observe that reader, and then coach the teacher on how to work with that student. It is not that the coaches are working directly with students on a day-to-day basis. Is that correct?
That is certainly a part of what they do. When this all first started, Anne and Jackie also were part of reading interventionists. So that may be, were part of that thought, Helen. But they no longer are. As of last year, I believe, that years all start to roll into one. It was last year when they were finally put out of intervention duty. It was a challenge because we were trying to be able to have coaches available during collaboration time, and when they were reading interventionists and had to be slotted into a time to provide that support to students, they could not then meet with teachers. The coaches are also providing a tremendous, and have provided a tremendous PD during the spring, during the set time, as we shared with you last year, some of the work they did. They have continued that work. I actually went in and said to Kristin yesterday, because I had a minute to click on both of Anne and Jackie's work, and I was just like, I'm just amazed. And I can't, I believe and agree wholeheartedly with what Ms. McDevitt said. If it weren't for the strength of our coaches, we would not be where we are. They are phenomenal. So we're blessed.
Just to jump it on the accolades as well, just because I have worked in other districts, and I don't know what the coaches do either, and I certainly know what these coaches do. It's interesting because in special education, you'd be surprised at the lack of reading instruction that special education teachers get in their undergraduate and graduate programs. It's really unusual, and that's including myself. My first understanding of what it was to teach reading was my first teaching job out of college where I taught in a language-based classroom, doing Wilson instruction. So that was my first interaction with actually teaching students how to read. And so their level of expertise in the area of reading is extremely impactful, even in conversations with special education teachers, because the combination of those two areas has been extremely helpful for us in instructing students, you know, whether it be B grid services or with specially designed instruction. So it's been great working with three of them.
And, thank you. I see, I see Mr. McDevitt is raising his hand, so.
Yep. I have another, just a quick comment. So, Mrs. Marks, you know, obviously, you know, we're a couple of months away from going into the dreaded budget season. But before you guys are presenting that to us in the January timeframe, you and Dr. Gilligan are going through with Mr. Mabley and looking at what you need for the next year. So one of the things that I would challenge you and the coaches with is, what do you need? I feel like I'm channeling Mr. Limpert right now.
You are.
What do you need, right? You know, like, do you need, is it materials? Is it books? Is it a different type of book? Is there something that we don't have at a specific level so that we can be pushing for that in the budget? And is there a way, because of some funding that's available today, that we might be able to get some of that in advance? So no answer required tonight, but you can percolate on that, and hopefully we'll see that in January.
We accept that challenge.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. So the last question I would have, and again, we're going to channel the other piece of Mr. Limpert, which is growth measures and outcomes from interventions. We've had a lot of explanation about what you're doing, Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. When I think of screening, I feel like that's the, that's the start number, and then you have growth. And so I will, at some point, love to know, particularly because we didn't have MCAS this year, that's usually one of the things that we use for measuring those outcomes, how we're going to be measuring those outcomes. Because we don't want to, you know, we can do amazing things, but if we don't have impact, if we don't have measurable growth, we're not really doing the job. Which I believe we're doing the job. I just, just looking for the measure. Show me the numbers.
We will do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all so much. And you are welcome to stay with us, and you are also welcome to go, and we will not be offended. Thank you, everyone, for your kind comments.
Thanks, guys. Great job.
Thank you. And we're back to you, Dr. Gilligan.
Dr. Mabley.
All right. I'm going to talk about enrollment numbers, because not surprisingly, interest has increased in what is going on with enrollment for North Andover. You've seen this before. What we do is we plug in the actual numbers. What's that?
Keep going down. You need to go down further on the slide.
I'm getting there.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay. It's in the superintendent's report. Yes. No, I don't think.
No, it's not.
No.
This is not linked, no.
No.
And I imagine it will be.
It will be. Yep. And so these are not yet, one disclaimer, these are not yet certified. Our October One numbers, I think Dr. Gilligan can confirm, it's usually the beginning of November that they get certified, but they don't usually change much. So we wouldn't anticipate them being much different than what you see here. Another note is that in the first column, which is the preschool, you can see that we did limit our preschool numbers this year, so that's why that one's down. Had been averaging around one hundred and twenty-five or so. That's at seventy for this year. But the other numbers are very consistent, not burying the lead here. Our enrollment numbers have changed very little from last year or as anticipated. You can see we had from K to twelve, forty-five, forty-two, and this year it's forty-five, thirty-five. So that's a difference of...
Jim, I'm sorry. I don't know, I don't know what I'm looking at here.
Okay. Yep. Yep.
I think the trick that Mr. McDevitt has taught me is the carrot at the end of the, at the end of the top, right? On the top, right?
So is G preschool, and then it goes down kindergarten?
So, yep.
That is preschool.
Yeah, preschool, and it goes across K to twelve. Yep. You can also see the, these correspond as well, right? Right here, David?
Yeah.
The K, that's K, and so on. So you can see the seventy in preschool, and then three oh one is kindergarten, three hundred and twenty-six first grade, and so on. And like I said, the total over here, last year was forty-five, forty-two, and this year it's forty-five, thirty-five. So it's changed very little. And I'm going to take you to our projection slide. So what we do is we take those actuals, and we take a five-year average. Last year is highlighted in this area right here. This was last year's projections. And it was the last year we had NESDEC projection numbers. We had had ten years of projections from NESDEC, and that was the last year of those projections. And we used to compare, as up until last year, we would compare our model with NESDEC. So last year, NESDEC had been off by a hundred and eleven, and our model was off by forty-four. This year, we do not have NESDEC to compare to, but the model was off by eleven students. We projected forty-five, forty-six, and it came to forty-five, thirty-five. So a difference of just eleven students, which really you can see was that difference in kindergarten. And the one question I have from this data is kindergarten. It's difficult to determine. You can see in other years, we have had years where we've had three hundred, then it was three forty-two, and then three oh eight. So you can see those kind of fluctuations, but we won't know until next year if it was supposed to be higher, but parents held out students from kindergarten. That we don't know, we won't know until next year. So it's certainly possible to have a low number like that. We have in the past. But we don't know if it's because of parents holding out some students.
I think several parents enrolled in private school for kindergarten.
Right. And we wouldn't be surprised to find that at all. So we would think that the increase from kindergarten to first grade next year will be more than usual.
Yeah.
Yep. That being the case, what we do, yes? You have a question?
Yeah, I have a kindergarten question. Do we have a cutoff by which a child needs to? I know that you have to be five by September one, but there are kids who are five by, you know, August thirty-one, that don't go to kindergarten until the following year. Do we have a hard cutoff for, you know, if you're, you know, whatever age, by whatever time, that you're not allowed to go to kindergarten, you have to go to first grade? Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. That's a great question. Yeah, we had a policy a couple of years back. So kindergarten's August thirty-first is the cutoff, and I only know of it with a child born September sixth. And the age for first grade, I can check on that. We have that information. I just don't know off the top of my head.
But there is an age at which, you know, if you hold your child back, they're not going to be placed in kindergarten, they're going to be placed in first grade.
We don't have any seven-year-olds, and kindergarten, do we?
Yeah, I think...
That's what she's asking.
Yeah. I mean, I want to just double-check, but it's typically, you know, someone who's probably just, you know, might be six.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Picard, I don't think our policy states that. I think we have age requirements or restrictions, depending on how you look at it, for kindergarten and first grade, but not a maximum, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess so. I just, I know a lot of people who have September babies, for example, will hold that child and start kindergarten a year later. But I don't know if you have an October, November, December, March baby, and you decide to hold back, if at some point we say, yeah, I'm sorry, it's not a kindergarten child anymore, it's going to be a first-grade child.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Picard, now.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying now. So it's August thirty-first. If you were born in September, and you weren't, you turned five, like, September first, then you wouldn't be eligible for kindergarten. But if you were born in August, it's not uncommon, sometimes people don't start them until the following year. It's typically not later.
What you saw before was the right thing.
Yep.
All right. I accept.
So just to, yep, just to finish up, I want to highlight this column. This is the difference between the five-year average change and the actual change. And I just, I want to highlight this to show how much it's indiscriminate sometimes between... What ends up happening is you have fluctuations in one grade that where you get less students the next year than you anticipated, but other grades make it up for the most part. And it's not, there's no rhyme or reason, it's not always, you know, one grade is lower and another grade is higher, it's just every year it's different. And that has to do with the units that open up in the town as well, to bring students in, or, there's a lot of reasons for it. But what I do highlight in yellow are those transition years. Kindergarten to first grade, fifth grade to sixth grade, and eighth to ninth grade. Those are usually good to look at. And you can see those didn't fluctuate much from other years to this year either, where we normally get an increase from kindergarten to first grade of ten, that was four this year. So only a difference of six. From fifth to sixth, we don't usually see much of a change. It's averaged minus one student, we got one additional. Oh, no, it averages one additional, we got one less. So a very small difference there. And then even in the high... And then even in high school, where we average 33 students less from eighth grade to ninth grade, this year, it was only 30. It's only a, a change of three. And I, I've, I said this last year as well, that number is lower than it used to be. If you recall, when we had tough times, 2008, 2009, a lot of students came back to North Andover. And then, when things got better, not as many went back to private schools as had been going in prior to that. So, that was, you know, we took that as a positive, that people had confidence in, in North Andover High School. So, bottom line, we have not seen much change at all in our enrollment.
Thank you.
And then, one last thing, we had been asked about class size averages, which is interesting. We have to account for the Ola in this. And just in case people are doing comparisons between the enrollment numbers in these, these class sizes, numbers do not include special education services only or out-of-district students. Those count in enrollment, but they are not in the classes, so they don't count towards the class size average. So, you can see, for those who are in the hybrid models, kindergarten is averaging 17 and 1/2, first grade 16.3, and so on across, in the 16s and 17s consistently for the hybrid model. And then, if you wanna find out the cohort size, just divide that by two. And then, same with the Ola. You can see the class sizes are in the low 20s for the Ola classes.
And I would ask Ms. Marks just one other thing. Ms. Marks, I know you're in charge of homeschooling. So, did we see any change in homeschooling?
We did. We, I believe, last year, there were 26 or 27 homeschoolers, and my last update was about 47 this year. And that would include some kindergarten students. So, I know I spoke specifically to some kindergarten parents.
Ms. Marks, is that representing, it's obviously a larger number of students. Is it a larger number of families as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and primarily due to health concerns. It's not, it wasn't a concern. You know, we had some of our families that were traditional homeschooling families before the pandemic. This increase in numbers is, is really due to health concerns.
Thank you. Okay, membership, do we have questions, Mr. Teresi?
No, just when these numbers get certified, could we get a copy of them?
Yes. Yep.
Good, thank you. Ms. Mabley?
Nope, very interesting, thanks.
Ms. Lynch?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. McDevitt?
None right now. I'd like to look at them, though. So, Dr. Mealy, if you wouldn't mind sending them, or letting us know when the link for public, that would be, that'd be great.
Yeah, that'll be done by tomorrow.
All right, and I have no questions at this time. So, Dr. Gilligan, are we, are we set with your report, and we're moving on?
I, I'm done at this time.
Okay, terrific, thank you so much. We really appreciate the work of you and, and all the members of the team. And we're on the chair's report. We started this evening's meeting with an executive session for the North Andover Teachers Assistant Association. And I wanna report to the public that the TAs and the school committee have approved an MOA. It is very similar to the teachers' MOA, and it was approved in executive session by a 5-0 vote of our membership and by a majority of their membership, whatever those numbers are. So, we're very pleased that that will go forward, and we're very, very thankful for the work of our TAs. We really could not do the work of North Andover Public Schools without those professionals and the work that they do. So, thank you so much to them, and we are on to old business. We're, we have the second reading of the financial and fundraising policies. And that is Dr. Mealy, I believe.
Yes, so I've highlighted in green, we had had discussions at the initial meeting, and, and Mr. McDevitt had indicated the work from the subcommittee that had been done, and that we really needed to get some more teeth in the fundraising section with regards to ensuring that people are getting educated and trained on the proper procedures, and acknowledging receipt of those, and understanding what will happen if they don't comply with those policies and procedures. And so, that's mostly what's been done in the highlighted green.
Okay, and you had mentioned last time that the highlighted yellow was really for you to make sure that the appendixes and the, and the forms and everything were all set.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we'll go through the membership and see if we have questions or comments, starting with.
No, no questions.
No questions? Ms. Mabley?
Yeah, so I just have one, just thing to flag, a key thing that is stated here, I can't remember what page it's on, but I saw it, is that there's a thing that outlines what the funds can be used for, what they cannot be used for, and it was clearly stated that they cannot be used for assistant coaches or anything like that.
Right.
Which has been, in very recent past, that is one of the ways that many of the teams have used those funds. So, obviously, we're coming up in budget season. Hopefully, people will be thinking about that, informed by the athletic director or what have you, that, that's gonna have to factor into 2021, '22 budget, so.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McDevitt?
I don't have any. I do just wanna take a quick minute and, and say thank you, Dr. Mealy, for incorporating all of these, the fundraising subcommittee, which met, I think, last spring and fall, which seems like a lifetime ago. Really kind of, I, I think, you know, a lot of our recommendations are really identified here. So, I know there was a lot of work to kind of put some of this stuff in, and I definitely appreciate it.
Good, all right, thank you so much. And I, I think I did this in sort of opposite order, but we will need a motion to approve the financial and fundraising policies as presented.
I'll move to approve the financial and fundraising policies as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, so I've got Amy moved, and Mr. McDevitt seconded. We should have discussion, but I sort of feel like we just did that. So, I'll just wait a moment, and if anybody shouts that they have a discussion point. Hearing none, I assume we're ready for a vote, and I will start with Mr. Teresi.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Mabley?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, so that's 5-0. In favor of approving the fundraising, financial policies as presented. Thank you all, thank you, Dr. Mealy. And we're on new business. We have three items which we will not vote on tonight, and the first is the capital plan, and we are with Dr. Mealy.
Okay, so you, you've seen this before as well, and it doesn't change much from one year to the next. We try not to have any surprises, but we do have some this year, that being said. I've highlighted them in blue, the, the changes from what we would have expected to, to have seen. I'm gonna first talk about the top, which is the Facilities Master Plan Phase 2. We, we did hire a consultant who has done a lot of work and produced some models, in particular, some estimates of what they would cost to do the renovations we've talked about at the elementary schools and the middle school. What we need to do now, as a, as a school department and school committee, is form a subcommittee that can look at those. Obviously, we've been kind of occupied with other things, but we do need to do this, that can, can look at those estimates and start to get some, some models put together and some options put together that can be vetted by the public, and we can, can kind of go from there. So, that's the next step. In, in talking with the town manager, she's, she agrees that that's what we need to do as well. So, we should talk about that as a, as a committee. Regarding our submittal of our capital plan request for next year and outgoing years, as I said, I highlighted in blue the differences. The first one I'm gonna talk about is the district-wide paving. Initially, this would have looked like $200,000 last year, $200,000 this year, and $200,000 in the next two years, and then dropping down to $50,000 per year just to maintain. But the work, we've, we've found that the work is more expensive than when this was first looked at, and more extensive. So, we needed to add two more years of $200,000 to the projects to complete the district, and then $50,000 should maintain it after that. The town manager is in agreement with, with that one as well, as well as the two that we have added. And those are the Middle School Performance Center floor and the Atkinson Elementary floor. We would have normally just held off till these renovation projects were going to take place, but in both cases, we cannot. They, they are starting to break up. The Performance Center has water intrusion underneath the floor that's created one area that's indented. It's like a little.
Sinkhole?
Sinkhole, exactly, thank you. And so, we need to take care of that. And the Atkinson cafeteria flooring, I was out there the other day, is starting to break up all of a sudden, but not just in one place. You can see it happening, and so, it's really something we need to address. So, that one would be, what's that?
Is that asbestos flooring?
What did she say?
Is that asbestos flooring?
So, underneath, so this is VCT tile, and underneath would, there, we would suspect there to be asbestos material that would have to be mitigated as well, innovated. So, that's another reason to take care of it now.
Yes.
So, in both cases, and again, the town manager is in complete agreement with adding these to our requests. And so, what you see here would be our CIP request for the coming year.
Okay, do we have any questions from the membership?
No.
I mean, you were, you were, can I ask one? You were super clear that it needs to be done. It, it feels a little painful, $240,000 at the middle school when we're looking at middle school renovations. I don't know if we would ever renovate in that area, but there's no way to do like a patch-up job.
Right, it, it's not, the delta between what it would cost to do now separately and as part of the project is not that much at all.
Okay.
So, we might as well just pull it out and do it.
Sounds good.
Yep.
That's, that's a big number compared to the Atkinson one here.
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch, Mr. McDevitt?
No questions.
Yeah, Mr. McDevitt has a question.
So, we're looking at here, you know, over five years, if I'm reading this correctly, spending roughly $1.8 million on paving and drainage and exterior renovation. So, you know, those are all, I, I'm gonna assume kind of necessary things that, that are there. But what are we not doing that, because we're paving? I mean, we're, we're spending $1.2 million on paving, and just wondering, is something else getting shelved so that we have a better driveway?
No, now, actually, if you look, I mean, it was important to add the district-wide exterior maintenance and renovation, and that kind of work allowed us to take care of the deteriorating arch at Thompson this past summer. And the district-wide drainage issues has its own funding. Basically, those, those are for maintaining our infrastructure and our facilities. We had gone a long time without paving, so that was the need for the, the big influx of funding over the, the last couple of years and the next few years. But then, it just will be a maintaining amount. When we look at our other needs, most of those are a part of what we would anticipate to be the renovations of the three older elementary schools and the middle school. The other items, we've worked closely, the other schools, we've worked closely with Steve Foster, and our annual general fund maintenance money and his annual facilities money takes care of the other things that come up. So, the, the only things that we're putting off right now are those things that are probably a couple of years out anyway, but are part of the renovation projects that we're anticipating.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So, my, my question is a process question. You suggested a subcommittee. Are we looking at a subcommittee or an advisory committee or a liaison to the Facilities Master Plan process? You know, what, what are we gonna need to be looking at, or is that a conversation we need to have?
No, actually, we've had a conversation, I've had a conversation with the town manager, and it, her next meeting, I know her meeting last, this Monday, was canceled because there was no technology. But they'll be looking to have a liaison and appoint someone from the Board of Selectmen, and we'll be looking to have our liaison, it's, it's Jim. Jim's done all the building projects here, and have the school committee appoint a representative to the Facilities Master Plan to committee.
Okay.
So, we're actually talking about two, though. We're talking about that as the Townwide Facilities Master Plan, but as far as what the school department needs to do, that's a subcommittee of the school committee that needs to be formed to determine what direction we, we think we should go in, and we should be looking for with regards to any information we've gotten from the consultant, and having some public hearings, and coming to some type of conclusion of what the best options would be.
Okay, and I, I don't think we're ready to do that tonight. I think we'll need to do that at a future meeting. Okay, terrific, thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, so then, we're on our first reading of the fiscal year 2021 preschool tuition. Back to you, Jim.
Yeah, on a roll. So, this one's fairly self-explanatory. We, we are not having as long a day as we have in the past. It's 95 minutes per day instead of 150 minutes per day. In talks with maybe Lou Connors and Tiffany Goddard, they recommended that we reduce the rate, and the minutes decrease at about 37%, but we're, they have recommended a reduction of about 22% because a lot of that goes towards fixed costs. We still have the same amount of staffing and, and other costs. But they are recommending that we reduce the monthly tuition rate for preschool for this year, or as long as we're in this schedule, from $320 per month to $250 per month.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the membership about that or comments?
Just a quick question. If we do this, this will be retroactive to September?
Actually, they haven't started collecting.
Oh, they haven't collected yet, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, they won't, they'll start collecting once we approve.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mabley?
No questions, thank you, it's very clear.
Ms. Lynch?
No questions.
Mr. McDevitt?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we'll vote on that next time. And there, there's no need to suspend the rules on that, right, Jim? We can, we can wait, 'cause they're not billing them yet?
Correct.
Okay, terrific. And, Dr. Gilligan, you are up with the first reading of the school committee and superintendent goals.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Member Mabley and Chair Picard for working so collaboratively on this. This is the school committee and superintendent goals and shared goals. And this year, we have approximately six. So, number one is really around addressing the challenges related to COVID-19, and it's about health and safety, about the development, implementation of the protocols, the procedures needed to keep kids and staff safe so that we can keep them in school. And a lot of this work was done over the summer and the beginning of the year, but it will continue as we go. The second goal is around the district's leadership team and providing the necessary leadership to successfully navigate the challenges of providing a high-quality education during the COVID-19 pandemic. And also, is a big part of that is preparing for FY22 budget. So, there's a couple of things in terms of what the leadership has to navigate so that we can best serve our students. The third one is, and this has been a big one. It's something that we're focused on here in the district. Ms. Marks and Chris DiNando have really spearheaded these efforts. But goal three for the 2021 school year is the district will support a district-wide commitment of social justice and equity for all students and staff. The district will continue to work to create a culture that reflects, respects, and embraces the voices, perspectives, and differences arising from our diverse community. And we have so many examples of things that we've done, but we wanna continue to do more, and we're excited to pursue that. Goal four is around professional development, and, you know, this is typically a goal, and it's, it's something that's really dramatically improved with the most recent assistant superintendent. She's done a great job. And, you know, one of the things we have to look at this year, besides technology and, you know, some of the things associated with, with the change, and how education's delivered. We're delivering education in a way that's never been done in the history of the world before. I mean, it hasn't been done here. And in terms of the professional development, it's really providing the support, both to staff members about best practices, but we also have to support them in professional development about their own social, emotional well-being and self-care. It's, it's not something that I think. It's, it's not something that I think anyone signed up for, and they're working really hard to do the best they can for our students. And then, the shared goals, the school committee and the superintendent, this one typically has talked really just about the middle school expansion and MSBA. And this has changed this wording, but it's collaborating with municipal officials and engaging with residents to ensure appropriate adequate educational facilities and funding in the future to decrease class size and better meet the needs of all students. And, you know, this is something that you, you know, recently or last spring, we were able to get the middle school project into the master facilities plan two along with the three elementary schools. So, we're looking at it that way. We have submitted a statement of interest, and we'll be waiting again for a notification. As I mentioned before, we'll be looking for a committee member to be on the facilities master plan two. And I think of real import is the town manager and I together will commission a facility space study. We've had some done over the years, you know, at different levels of intensity, I'd say. Probably the most, this will be the most comprehensive, I think, since Stan Limpert's. Many years back, Stan had one of the most comprehensive facility reports I've ever seen. We'll make staffing recommendations. We'll review and analyze these for next steps around what are we going to do to best meet the needs of our kids? And if we don't get MSBA funding, what are the other mechanisms we're going to look at? And what are, what are all the options and creative ways that we could best serve the kids? And then, last but not least, the school committee goal. I think maybe Ms. Picard, it might be best for you to talk about that one.
I will. I just dropped my pen. Yeah, so this has been similar to school committee goals in prior years where we seek opportunities to communicate and engage with the community and to advocate for the district with residents and town leadership. And, you know, in light of COVID-19, some of our opportunities to engage with the public, we often say that we're going to attend events, and there are some limitations around that. So, we do have, you know, we have included even during this COVID time, the opportunity for public comment, but we wanted to really make sure that there's also an opportunity for two-way conversation that may not be happening more organically. So, we've added a bullet point to have, to host virtual coffee chats. So, those will be two-way conversations where we can have a conversation with community members and then bring that information back to the committee. So, those will be with only two members because they will not be open meeting law. They're going to be more informal opportunities. So, we'll do those ones per trimester, and I will be happy to hear from the members if they're interested in engaging in, in those conversations. But we'll continue with some of the other activities that we've done and communicating complex issues clearly with all constituents, attending meetings as we're able. We have a liaison system so that we have folks that attend the PTO meetings, the CPAC meetings, the PTO presidents, all, you know, our, our whole host of liaisons who report back to us are, are the, some of the important ways that we gather information. So, as, as again, if you're interested in engaging in some other things, it will be important to share those. And as we're, as we have our final go-around each week, it will be important to share out what opportunities may exist for committee members to engage in, in future opportunities. So, that's where we went with that. I realize that these, these goals were linked rather late. We had, we had some things come up and get in the way of us making these goals. So, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to really fully engage in a discussion about these tonight. This is only first reading. So, I will welcome comments or questions from the committee now, but I would also welcome them between now and our next meeting, and we can have a more robust conversation at our, at our next meeting. We might decide that we'll hold our vote until the following meeting. But, you know, just with respect to the fact that I know that the members didn't have a whole lot of time to read these in advance and prepare their questions, I think it's going to be important that we have opportunities for further discussion before, you know, before we take a vote. So, that being said, is there anyone in the membership who wants to ask a question or make a comment at this time? And I'll start with Mr. Teresi.
No, I think that's a good plan. That's a good plan, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Mayble?
No, I'm interested to hear some feedback from my colleagues first.
Okay, yeah. And Ms. Lynch?
No.
Okay, and Mr. McDevitt?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and we will, we will try to plan some good time in our next meeting and certainly between now and the next meeting. If you want to email me, if you want to call me, if you want to meet online, let me know, and I'll be happy to have a conversation. And Ms. Mayble was aptly involved in helping develop these, so I'm sure she'd welcome your conversations as well. And that is our agenda. Yep, and I will go around for comments and information that people might want to share, and I'm starting with Mr. McDevitt.
So, before we go into comments, kind of closing comments, I'd like to just, perhaps Dr. Gilligan could help me, but I'd like to put a motion, I can't speak, a motion on the floor, which would, I assume, require some suspension of the rules if Dr. Gilligan kind of can't help us with this. But my motion is this, that pending further review of the MIAA and DESE recommendations and guidelines with sports, that we authorize the superintendent in consultation with the Board of Health to allow North Andover Public Schools to continue athletics and activities following safety guidelines.
Can you help me understand? So, we have a motion, and I guess we would need a second before we can end the discussion. So, I, did I hear Ms. Mayble seconded?
Ms. Lynch and Ms. Mayble was going to also.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. So, can you help me understand what your intention is, Mr. McDevitt? Are you intending for an immediate return to sports or an eventual return to sports or what? What's your?
So, we found out today approximately, I don't know, 2:00 or so, that sports were on a hiatus for two weeks because our students at the high school level were going to be remote. And looking at the guidelines from the Department of Education, I'm not clear that just because we are a remote district, just because we are a red district who is now remote, that sports need to be stopped. So, I'm trying to get some clarification on that. We were not going to meet, you know, for another two weeks or so. So, you know, that's two weeks of sport competition that our student athletes are missing out on as well as other activities as well. So, I think what this would allow us to do is get some clarification, and if the clarification is in our favor, then a vote to allow the superintendent to continue these activities.
And in, in your opinion, we need this vote, the vote that we had that gave those authorities to the superintendent, when we modified our policies, you feel don't cover this?
I feel like there's ambiguity in what the Department of Education is giving us for guidance right now. And in view of the fact that this recommendation came out or, or, or that we moved into high school shutdown this afternoon, you know, there's a very quick decision that sports competition stopped. And I'm not asking for that to necessarily be reversed, but I'm asking for guidance on that and clarification and if that then falls to the superintendent and the Board of Health.
Okay. Are there other members who have questions or comments or need clarification?
Could you repeat the motion again? I'm sorry.
I don't know. So, what I had written down, which I'm happy to kind of modify as we may or may not need to, but pending further review of the MIAA and Department of Education recommendations to allow this, to authorize the superintendent in consultation with the Board of Health to allow North Andover Public Schools to continue athletic and activities, athletics and activities under safety guidelines.
So, you're not asking us to overrule the superintendent right now? Is that, is, because I'm worried about, I'm worried about two things. First of all, we don't know adam about this first, but this isn't, this isn't a posted agenda item. And I know it just happened today, but I, I do worry about, you know, the proper posting of taking a vote on something like this today. If it's just clarification, I don't think we need to vote for that, but.
Well, I think to Mr. McDevitt's point, so, I mean, I was hoping like with.
Dr. Gilligan?
Yep.
We can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. McDevitt, very good point. The state and the MI2A do issue guidance, and they're not always the most clear organizations in terms of their language. I would say that our meeting today, based on the specific information that we have about the cases at North Andover High School, the, we made the determination, myself, the Public Director of Health, the COVID Task Force, that North Andover would not participate in sports, athletics, or activities so that we could keep our kids safe. And I think a little bit of what Mr. McDevitt is talking about, and I, earlier, I might have had this just slightly off because the language is really awkward. The MI2A and the DESE have a joint guidance on this. And so, based on our situation locally, we, we made a determination, Water Health, the team, not to do that because we obviously want to keep kids safe and get them in school. But the language from the state and the MI2A only talks about red districts that are completely out of school, you know, for the long run. And the other language, you know, is that if a yellow, green, or unshaded district that is only offering remote learning to its high school students, which is to participate in the regularly scheduled sports season, this must be approved by the local school board. So, it's, I can certainly share with you folks the information, but that's what, that's what we have.
So, this does seem like an appropriate motion to make because our initial interpretation is the superintendent can say, we're not going to participate when you're in the red and not in school, but the superintendent doesn't have the ability without school committee approval to say, we will participate.
And, and the guidelines don't, you know, it says red, yellow, green, or unshaded when you're in remote for high school students. If they wish to participate, it would require your approval. But it doesn't mention red in that language.
Doesn't it have like a new asterisk thing too now?
Well, I will say that the state, the state, Mass DPH just shut down hockey in the Commonwealth for the next two weeks.
All hockey?
All hockey. In the Commonwealth. And again, you know, it's, their language, it's been, believe me, as someone who's had over nine or 10 guidances, over 300 pages since July 1, it, it is sometimes confusing. But again, they don't use that red language, you know, for the approval. But our determination was that, based on the information, this, this is what we need to do. This is what will keep our kids safe, and I would not go against the recommendation of Public Health here in town.
So, I have a clarifying question, too. Could it, could single sports be excluded from the ban? Or is if we ban, if we say all sports for two weeks, it has to be all sports? Or could you say sports that have no incidences of cases or are outside? Could those continue?
As the group that has to make this really difficult decisions, we determined that there should be no sports or activities based on the specific information that we spent hours and hours on earlier today.
That's golf, cross-country, everything? Really?
And it seems to me that Mr. McDevitt's motion is intended to make it so that the superintendent can reconsider that decision as more information becomes available. So, perhaps in a week's time, when there's more contact tracing and all that other stuff, that perhaps cross-country, for example, might be able to practice while, you know, a contact sport might not. Is that what we're looking for here?
Well, there are levels of, of sports, whether they're low, medium, or high-risk sports that are out there. And so, you know, at this point, I think we are low and medium only. Where there is some misunderstanding or interpretation available is it say, states that, how the district starts the school year, whether we are yellow, red, or green, not the move within that. That's where I don't understand exactly, are we talking about, like, because we've moved and, and we're, like, we've got the students at our home, they are learning remotely, can they still safely practice for sports, wearing masks as they have been outside, open air, and continue conceivably some competitions? We have neighboring towns who have not stepped foot in a school, who are red, who are playing in athletic competition. So, I don't understand our interpretation. So, I'm asking for there to be a review of this and to, to give the superintendent the ability, based upon any new information that comes out from MIAA or DESI, to, to make that decision, which I assume he probably can anyway, but I'm, I guess.
Yeah.
From what I heard Dr. Gilligan present, this is not MIAA or DESI that's saying that we can't do sports. It's our COVID response team that's saying, we can't play sports. Dr. Gilligan, is that inaccurate?
Well, I agree with Mr. McDevitt on the ambiguity sometimes from the MI2A and DESI, but we made a determination today that this.
Who is we?
The COVID response team.
The COVID response team, in addition to the, myself as superintendent and the Public Health Director, which makes decisions on transitions to models with me, and we have the town manager as well. So, our determination, based on the information, is that we would not be running athletics, and it's for specific, the specific reasons why we would not be running athletics. We want to keep our kids safe. We need them in this period of the 14 days out because that's determined what's best at this time.
So, it wasn't based on us being red or based on MIAA or based on DESI, but based on what you know from our public health officials?
That was our determination today?
Yes.
And I, I just, I only brought up the MI2A piece because when I spoke to DESI today, they said, you know, clearly, you know, we would not have sports or activities. But it was based probably on the specifics of the case here in North Andover, but I did go on to read later these other pieces, but, you know.
Is it safe to say there's information that you can't share due to privacy concerns as well?
I mean, it's just, it's based on, you know, the cluster, the pending results that will be coming, kids in quarantine. We don't want kids out and about and have a chance to spread the virus.
Sure.
Our ultimate goal is to keep our kids in school. We want to get as many kids in school as we can get in school. And so, that was the determination. I came across this language real later in the night. I hadn't seen it in a little bit, but I called back DESI for a little guidance, and I'd be happy to share it with all of you.
That's making it more confusing.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to, the motion doesn't overrule your decision. The motion just is asking you to reconsider his decision, Andrew? Is that, is that what we're saying?
It's not really even a reconsider. It's for him to get clarification where the, where the ambiguity is here, and if that clarification leads him in another direction, then, you know, he would reconsider.
Yeah, that, that's very helpful, Andrew. I appreciate that. Do Amy or Holly have further questions at this point?
No, not anymore.
So, we have a motion and a second. So we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion and clarification. Are we ready for a roll call vote?
We'd have to suspend the rules for us.
You'd have to suspend the rules.
I don't know. I mean, it's not a posted.
Yeah, we'd have to suspend the motion.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not even a suspension of the rules. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think the motion does anything. I think Greg, you can, I don't think we need to even have this vote. But usually if you're voting on something, it needs to be a posted agenda item. And I know it just came up today, but I, I think Andrew's just asking Greg to go, to, to figure out what the ambiguities are here and maybe report back to us in a few days if, if he has something. I mean.
The challenge that is, we have a season that will end in a couple of days.
Yeah, but I mean, this is a symbolic vote, right? I mean, I don't care. It doesn't have any really weight. I mean, you, all you're saying is Greg, go get some information.
I can get more information about the MI2A. We clearly have that. That's where the ambiguity is. There's no ambiguity in the team meeting today and the public health director, the superintendent of schools, the town manager, and the team determining that this was what we had to do to keep our kids safe so we can get them back in school and keep our kids in school.
So you weren't confused by any of the rules or the language? This is the decision.
I wanted to bring these rules up because there is, there are questions. Because the decision we made was about the health and safety of our kids here at North Andover High School, and it was specific to this case. To Andrew's point, there may be other considerations in other towns where there could be a totally different situation. You know, but in terms of, you know, the, the part determined today, I don't, I wouldn't see that. I wouldn't, that would not change at this point based on our health experts providing the information they did.
And if the recommendation did change?
Determination.
Excuse me, if the determination were to change, then as it stands now, you would need to come back to us and we would need to vote to approve starting sports, even though they're remote.
Or could you do it on your own?
I wouldn't, I, I would not, I, I would not, we're out of school guys for a reason. There's nothing more important.
I'm just looking for process, Greg.
Yeah, so I would just say this, I'm happy to share the language. I think it can be interpreted different ways. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, just outside of our situation at North Andover High, you know, it, the language is if a yellow, green, or unshaded district that is only offering remote learning to its high school students, which is to participate in regularly scheduled sports season, this must be approved by the local school committee. And I also, to Mr. McDevitt's point, very good point, up top, districts designated red, you know, based on those metrics, you know, that are completely remote, must postpone their entire season, including practices until the later floating season. So it isn't all that clear, but what was really clear was what we worked on all day. And I could, Jim, if you wanted to add anything?
I wouldn't be tried.
You're kind to offer, but I'm going to take a pass.
It, it seems to me that we could almost use a different motion, more around the lines of if for some reason there is new information and, you know, on Tuesday, we could suddenly open up the, the season again, that we would, Dr. Gilligan doesn't need to come and ask our permission, we would say, go ahead. Like, to me, that's what we actually are looking for.
Process wise, to me, to Mr. Terese's point, it would be more appropriate for us to post a meeting for Tuesday of next week.
If we got information.
Right. But we could post a meeting, we could, I mean, we could post a meeting for every night of the next two weeks. And then we could come back together and do a vote if at some point the determination changed. Everybody needs to be free all the time.
But that's also a point, maybe that's a point of process, but to me, that's confusing, the public having about two weeks of meetings posted just in case. I, I don't, I don't see that as clarifying or helpful personally.
Right.
I would rather do a blanket if, if something, you know, were to change, that we don't have to approve it. We say that we trust your judgment and you and the, and the medical team in town.
I would just add that.
We recognize you're not going to.
If we could continue being in school, we would be in school. If there was a way that we could continue to have sports, we wouldn't have come to a determination that we, we can't have sports. And.
Understood.
But I totally respect and understand where Andrew's coming from because the state is often confusing.
Yeah, and this is a, this is a big loss, especially where, you know, the season is so short.
Huge. And, you know, and I'm a huge supporter of our activities, athletics, not just athletics, but all of our activities and clubs and different groups.
So I would be inclined to, to not have a vote on this tonight and to post, you know, a, a short meeting, a 15 minute meeting for next week if we wanted to do this because it does not sound like it would be imminent that we would be restarting sports in the next four or five days when we're in a.
But why can't we do what Amy suggested instead of posting a meeting, just vote right now to say?
Because this wasn't, because this wasn't posted as something that we were going to vote on.
It seems to me that.
Because we don't have the. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, it seems, do we need, for you to do this, if you so chose, would we have to delegate this responsibility to you?
I think what's confusing is the rules that they put out from the state.
Right.
I read it as, it doesn't, you know, the school committee would have to approve if we were remote in yellow, green, or unshaded. There's a confusing part at the top about being red. I would say that we made a determination today, we wouldn't decide.
I know.
We understand that part.
But to go back, I think this could, Greg is saying, we have to approve it.
Yeah. Well, you know, he's not sure.
That's, that was the part.
That's the ambiguous part.
But our determination, based on the experts today, would not, I, I do not, that would not change.
Okay, I get that part.
But I think what Andrew wants, and correct me wrong, if there was information that came out and you wanted to allow sports, if, we would need to delegate that authority to you.
Or we would have to vote on it, is what that ambiguous, ambiguous language is.
So maybe Helen's right, is that we just have a quick meeting just to, to delegate if and when, or maybe it doesn't happen at all, that we don't have to meet to do it. We could just delegate it to you.
Well, what I would say is that I would not be making that decision by myself. It would be, we.
You would want to come back to us.
No, no, no.
No, it is committee.
Whether there's a vote or there's not a vote, it would have to be supported by the board of health, the public director of health, and our team. And that's not the case at this time.
Right. We know that. Today, Thursday, nine o'clock, we, we're nine 20 now. We know. But, but maybe on Monday or Tuesday, I don't know, maybe lightning strikes and that happens. At that point, are you telling me that this school committee in your, what you're reading down, has to take a vote because of that, to, to allow it?
It does not.
If, if the circumstances change?
It does not say red, and we're red tonight, so.
Red asterisk. Whatever the case. I don't know.
I understand. I'm just, my concern is I don't want to, I, I do not, we do not take this lightly, and.
I think that's why we're willing to give you the authority because we know you don't take it lightly.
Yeah. We're not gonna, I, I, I'm not gonna vote to overrule what you know and what Brian McGrath knows and the rest of the COVID response. And I, I respect your opinion on this and, and your team's opinion on this. I'm just trying to figure out if, if you're handcuffed, if, if, if things changed and you wanted to change your mind, are you handcuffed by us not taking action? Maybe you don't really answer the question, but maybe we, we post a meeting for Tuesday. We find out between now and then, if we have to do it, things probably aren't going to change, Greg. But I don't want to, I don't, don't want to be accused of not giving you the authority or us not meeting to allow it to happen because of some silly DESI or.
And a two week gap in our next meeting.
Yeah. I'm, all I'm, yeah, you guys know what I'm saying. I've said it.
I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
The decision today was made outside of the DESI piece. It was about the health.
Right. I, I would be inclined to post a meeting. That would be my inclination.
So, so fine with that. The point and the goal of my motion is there's so much ambiguity with this that I really want some clarification. And if there's a way for this to happen and we have to give Dr. Gilligan the authority, that, that is possible. So I'm in for a Tuesday meeting and I'll work with whomever on drafting language or, or whatever it needs to be.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. It's really important that, that we do think about these things. And this is, this is new. This hasn't come up before. So i- is the rest of the membership okay with having a, a meeting posted for Tuesday? That we can take up this motion?
Well, the, yeah, I would just ask Andrew to withdraw the motion because it's already been seconded.
We, we can do that, but let's just make sure that that's what we want to do.
I'm okay with that.
I can do Tuesday.
Yeah, it'll be quick.
All right. So Andrew, would you withdraw the motion?
I will withdraw the motion because we're meeting on Tuesday, so, perfect.
Okay. And Ms. Zagari, can you please post a meeting for Tuesday at, is six o'clock good for everybody? Six o'clock? Okay. All right. So we'll post a meeting for six o'clock on Tuesday. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have our, our last go around with whatever comments or announcements or information any members might want to share. And I'll start with Mr. Terese.
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Lynch?
No, thank you.
Ms. Mc, Ms. Mabley?
Yeah, just a quick thing that the Recreation Complex Committee has been asked, it's been posted to go to the next elections meeting for executive session. I'm assuming it's going to be an update on what's going on with that project. It was supposed to be on Monday, but it got postponed due to no internet. So I'll be going to that on Monday and hopefully we'll have information to share if I can afterward.
Thank you very much for doing that. Mr. McDevitt?
Just very quickly, you know, I think we planned on this being a shorter meeting, but I loved the great presentations tonight. So thank you for. Dr. Gilligan, I know that very difficult decision to, to be made today. And I don't envy you for having to make that decision. And I'm sure that there's a lot of people who are happy, and, and, and I shouldn't say happy, but are supportive of that, and a lot of people who are very upset with that as well. But again and again, you know, the interest of our students and the safety of them, you know, has again just been paramount with you. So I do want to take a, a quick moment and say thank you for that. And then, you know, time and time again, right, our teachers, our teaching assistants, our cafeteria, our, our. Have been so amazing and have, have really risen to the challenges. And so on Monday, all of our high school teachers will rise to another challenge of teaching, you know, five days synchronous, not synchronous, but full remote, you know, whatever that number is in their classroom for the entire duration of the day. And it's a big change in terms of, you know, lessons and plans and, and things that were all made. And so I know many of them will spend countless hours this weekend to prepare for the upcoming weekend. So I really just want to say thank you for that. The, the teachers and faculty, you're going above and beyond. And the community notices and is very appreciative. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. And I would just echo that. And I really, again, appreciate the team at Central Office and all the administrators, you know, across the district that are providing the support that these teachers need to do the job. So that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It was moved by Mr. Terese and seconded by Ms. Lynch, I think.
That was correct.
Okay. And I'm guessing there was no discussion, so we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Terese.
Aye.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we adjourn on 10/22/2020 at 9:24. Thank you.
Thank you.